Being late and grateful we're not in Malibu, so. Welcome, everybody, to the commission meeting. And Shontae, will you kick us off, please?
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, December 10, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narik Katz.
Present.
President Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pender.
Present.
Five board members, a quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Shontae, and welcome, everyone. We're going to take a, we're going to go a little bit out of order this morning.
If anyone has a seat empty next to them, raise your hands so some of these people could sit down, please. If you want to sit, there's a couple of seats up here.
What I'd like to do is, first of all, item 18 is being put over to our next meeting. While some questions get sorted out relative to that contract and the company. And what I'd like to do is move to item 32 without objection. No reason to make arm weight any longer than necessary after all these years. So. And it's not that we're trying to get rid of you faster, it's just that you've sat through a number of these already. And as I'm told the tradition is here, I'm going to read the resolution.
Please.
Or try to, at least. Whereas Aram Benyamin, Chief Operating Officer of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is retiring on January 1, 2025. After 44 years of remarkable and impactful career in public utility sector, including over 36 years at the largest municipal water and power utility in the United States. And whereas Mr. Benjamin began his LADWP service on December 30, 1980, as a civil engineer assistant, civil engineering assistant in the power system, and progressively advanced in his career promoting to structural engineer associate in 1989, materials testing engineer in 1991, power engineering manager in 2003, senior assistant GM power system in 2008. And whereas throughout his long and illustrious career at LADWP, Mr. Benjamin worked in many divisions, including power construction, maintenance division, power supply, operations division, the power executive office, and the office of chief operating officer. Just couldn't hold one job, huh? Whereas Mr. Benjamin as an engineering management and technology innovator, led efforts to implement earned value management as an LADWP process, measuring project performance, progress while considering, and progress while considering the schedule, the cost, and technical factors so that managers can forecast future performance and make more informed decisions about that benefit the ratepayers. And whereas Mr. Benjamin joined the Joint Safety Training Institute in 2008, playing a critical role in developing many programs that continue today, including the Enduring Partnership with LA Trade Tech College, LA Trade Tech, to enhance training and opportunities and. Whereas Mr. Benjamin's legacy of commitment to employee development is reflected in championing the new engineering associate training program, as well as the department's tuition reimbursement program. And whereas Mr. Benjamin's commitment to employee safety is reflected in his work to successfully implement Safe Start and safety design at LADWP, and his strong support and advocacy of the worker safety group in our program. And whereas Mr. Benjamin became Colorado Springs Utility Manager of Energy Supply, and later Chief Executive Officer managing CSU's Integrated Resource Plan, accelerating resiliency and conservation efforts, and directing innovative business solutions to leverage fiber technology and modernization. And whereas Mr. Benjamin returned to LADWP in 2022 as chief operating officer, and in that role led to several LADWP initiatives to help enhance the customer experience, strengthen the emergency response coordination, promote electrical vehicle adoption, modernize our distribution system, and adopt green hydrogen as a viable, a valuable source of clean energy. And whereas Mr. Benjamin helped strengthen the information technology services for the department, beginning with hiring the chief information security officer and interim chief information technology officer. He also demonstrated support for the Enterprise Resource Planning Project and set forth a technology forward vision that led to many innovative initiatives he shepherded in record time. Furthermore, Mr. Benjamin helped strengthen LADWP cybersecurity posture and initiated the department's artificial intelligence journey which continues to mature. And. Whereas Mr. Benjamin created the Advanced Technologies Infrastructure Division to implement advanced metering infrastructure, distributed automation to modernize our infrastructure, while enhancing the customer experience. And whereas Mr. Benjamin led the John Ferraro Building Modernization Project with the goal of maximizing sustainability features of the architectural landmark while further supporting the changing needs of LA's DWP workforce, which led to the development of the Work Hub project. And whereas Mr. Benjamin is unwavering advocate of the joint labor management process and is a tireless supporter of the utility pre-craft trainee program co-administered by LADWP and IBEW Local 18. And whereas Mr. Benjamin has been a driving force behind the strategic direction of the department, and as a result of his leadership and commitment and tireless dedication has left an indelible mark, creating legacy and a legacy that continues to influence and shape operations. And whereas Mr. Benjamin has strongly defended and strengthened the department's vertically integrated structure, ensuring LADWP owns generation, transmission, and distribution assets, which has allowed the department to continue to provide clean, affordable, reliable, resilient, equitable power for all residents of the city of Los Angeles, despite continued climate regulatory and technological challenges facing the utility industry. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, on behalf of the management of this department and its employees and the citizens of Los Angeles, thank and commend Mr. Benjamin for his service as a highly dedicated, motivated, inspirational, employee-oriented manager who embodied LADWP's values of professional excellence and extends its best wishes to him for a productive, healthy, and long retirement. Be it further resolved that the Board extends every best possible wish to Mr. Benjamin for a prosperous, long, enjoyable, and well-deserved retirement. Be it further resolved that the secretary, assistant secretary, or secretary of the Board be instructed to place this resolution in the minutes of this Board as a permanent record and that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Benjamin in recognition of his dedicated and faithful service to the people of LADWP and the citizens of Los Angeles. I hereby certify that foregoing is a full, true, and correct. Because I assume it's true, this is how he wrote it, right? Adopted resolution by the full Board of the Department of Water and Power Commissioners, City of Los Angeles, at its meeting held on December 10, 2024. So with that, I'll take a motion and a second on the resolution. And we have that.
Motion to adopt.
All members present being recorded as I votes, we will do that, we will take that.
I would like to lead us in standing up. This is a gentleman that I've known so long and respect so much.
I feel like we should do a cheer. I was going to ask, I'm going to ask first if there are other commissioners that would like to make comments.
Yeah, I would. I will unfortunately not be at the celebration tomorrow, so would like to take a moment. And obviously, President Katz just ran through your illustrious career here, so I won't repeat all of that, but I'll just give you a more personal thank you. I've been on the Board about two years now. And when I first started, I really appreciated the way that you welcomed me to the Board and, you know, shared a lot of your expertise, especially, you know, coming from Colorado and some of the innovative work that you were doing there. It's really been an honor to work with you and to learn from your extensive expertise with the department and in the industry in general. So you will definitely be missed, and I suppose you're allowed to retire again. But, you know, really thank you for your long service to the department, to the city. Really appreciate it, and just want to wish you all the best in your next adventures.
Should we just go down the line?
Sure.
Aram, I, I will be at your retirement party on the podium tomorrow, so I'll save my roast for then. But suffice it to say that I think one of the.
It's not on, I think you got to press the button.
No, it's on. It's on.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe one of the benefits of doing so much at this department and other places is that your perspective, despite your long tenure here, has remained so fresh. I mean, your ability to launch whole new divisions of the operation to tackle, you know, challenges and opportunities like AI, which you worked on together, is such a testament to your stature as someone who's just so continuously learning, so continuously curious, that curiosity has been, like Narik said, such a gift to me in learning the ins and outs of this organization. I really appreciate the time and wisdom you've shared with me in our, in our just brief overlap, you know, that was practically a blink of the eye compared to the time you spent here. So I'm eternally grateful to you and excited to celebrate you and eat too much cake or whatever we're going to do tomorrow. And I wish you the best for, what does it say? A healthy, long, and prosperous retirement. Yeah, the prosperity, I guess, will come from the pension. Maybe you'll find something else to do. But yeah, wishing you all those things and more.
And I would briefly add that while I was an attorney for the Department of Water and Power, we had the disaster at the Crandall Mines. And I was sent to go to Utah, investigate that, hire additional attorneys, those who are licensed in Utah, I'm only licensed in California. And we had to get to the bottom of it. And literally, I did get to the bottom of it because I went down in the Crandall Mines, and I would never have gone without Aram with me. And it was a beginning of a, of a long friendship. And I was so delighted that he was back from Colorado when I joined this commission. So he exemplifies truly the best of DWP, and you truly will be missed, especially by me. But I kind of know where you live, I may come by, uninvited or invited.
Yes, I have really appreciated your guidance and, again, your curiosity. You know, you always sort of brighten up the room with, with questions, but also with important information that you share that, that really helps us understand what we're, what we're all about here. So thank you so much, and I, you will be missed, for sure.
David, you look like you want to do something, you're better, you're going to a garage sale, I can't tell.
A little bit of both, President Katz. I just want to say thank you for the moment to speak. I've known Mr. Benjamin, my brother, for over 20 years. When I was a first level supervisor, I remember going into his office over some solar thing that we were talking about, that he had asked me to come speak to him over. And I couldn't believe that the senior assistant general manager of the power system wanted to speak to me in his office about solar. And you never know when somebody's being genuine about something like that. But when I walked in there, Aram forgot everything else that was going on. He made me feel like the most important person in the world and just listened to everything that I had to say. And I realized very early on that he was somebody that was going to listen, and he was going to pull the trigger on what you told him. So you better be careful about what you tell him, because he's going to pull the trigger. So we have a tradition here in the power system where we put the world's loveliest lamp together with an old electrical mechanical meter that no one's wife will let you put in the house. But I have confidence in you, my brother, that you can convince Sona to let you put this in your living room, so.
Take the plastic? Yes. Commissioner Pender thinks you should have, Commissioner Pender thinks you should have at least taken the plastic off the, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pender. We've been trying to get automated meters off the ground for 30 years, and we haven't been able to do it until you got here. So from Mr. John Vanacore, Jason Rondue, and myself, here you go.
When you say get it off the ground, I didn't think you meant literally take it off the ground and hand it to them, you know?
We had to pull that today for non-payment.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gus Corona, check him up for some comments. Gus, welcome. IBEW 18, appreciate your being here, and the members, and where's yours?
Well, I appreciate the time, President Katz, and good morning, Commissioners. My brother. You know, I listen to that resolution, it's like, wow, what a tremendous career. But, you know, we're here today to see you moving on to the next phase of your life. And we want to thank you for all that you've done for LADWP and the employees. Just like David, I've known you for over 20 years. And I've come to appreciate and value your friendship. You know, it's something that, that you just can't take for granted. I always admire your beliefs that you hold dear, which is, this department is not, is, this department will never, is not what it is today without the employees. You always treated employees with respect, no matter what position they held at the department. Whether it was someone in the field working with the water mainlines or the power lines, you respected their efforts. You treated employees with empathy, like a single mother who struggled to get to work on time because she couldn't, she had to drop off her child at daycare. It's the principles that you hold dear. And no matter how far up the promotional ladder you moved up, you always retain those principles. And it's, this fundamental belief is rarely found in a person. So when you get to work with someone like you, a person that holds these values, you just hate to see them leave. And you're going to miss them, and we're going to miss you. So on behalf of our members, our officers, and our staff, and from me, we wish you all the best in your retired life, a healthy and exciting retirement. So thank you for everything you've done.
Gus, thank you very much. On Salma?
Thank you, Mr. President. Aram, like everybody else, we seem to have known each other for a long time. Actually, you and I used to be in the same van pool many, many years ago. Yeah, I know, you laugh, I know. Funny thing is, when I bought my house, I needed somebody to inspect my chimney in because you had your inspector's license. You're the one that came and inspected my chimney for me, so. It's still standing, which is good. So, Aram, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and your support of the water system. I will say that that always became very evident, especially when we had emergencies. Whenever there was some kind of major emergency, you always made sure to talk to me and ask me, "Does staff have everything they need?" We went through major runoffs, we went through Hillary and some other things that were pretty challenging. And having somebody that would appreciate the work that staff did and be supportive to make sure they had everything they needed, not just equipment, but if they needed food, they needed anything, you made sure that they had it. So we really do appreciate that. And I don't want to be outdone by my compadre here from the power system. So we also have a gift for you. And by the way, if you notice, we even dressed alike today just for you. You know, we're all rocking it the best. So what I have here is, you know, in typical fashion of the water system, we like to show off some of our equipment. I was thinking whether or not I should say what it is and see if people know. The average person may not. But what this is, this is a two-inch reg valve that we actually cut open. And I will stand up and show it, but this is very heavy, so watch your back when I give it to you. I think you're like me, we got back issues, so. But this is from the, that was put together by the water system, water operations, a pressure regulating valve. As you know, we use it to reduce the pressure, so now that you're retired, you can reduce your pressure. So just look at this, and you'll be a lot more relaxed. There's a picture there, Dave, all right? So let me give you this. He can hold it along.
Dr. Pickle.
Aram, congratulations. You got done an incredible number of things that a lot of people attempted or talked about, but you got them done. And that list is a long list, and it's an important list, so congratulations on that. And two, you're still young. So have fun, although maintenance costs goes up.
For a thank you. Aram, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to share one additional thing. There was a lot of accolades in your resolution. But during the 94 earthquake, that was, the epicenter was in LA, Aram was instrumental in working with FEMA, explaining our system, explaining our tools and our processes. And he got over hundreds of millions of dollars back to the department because of his people skills, his knowledge of the power system, and his ability to work with others to go through emergencies and get all that done. So I just, that was a big thing for the department. It was a long time ago, but it was, it was a major.
It's not often that you see someone who's leaving you after 44 years, and you say it's too soon. So congratulations, Aram. You have not only been there for the department and for its employees, you've been there for those of us who started here much younger. And you've seen us advance, you've supported us, you've been our friend. You've also chastised us when we need to be and told us to do better when necessary. So you've been an incredible career mentor and supporter. We really appreciate it. I know that I will miss you, and I know so many of our employees will too, whether they know you personally or not. But those of us who know you personally, we are just very happy for you in your next chapter, wish you all the best. And it's with a great deal of gratitude that we say congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a.
I'm going, thank you. Mr. Benjamin, the person I share the same haircut with. Obviously, I haven't known you as long as my peers to the, to the right, so I don't have the long stories. But I'd like to thank you for your few years that I had the chance to serve underneath you, for your guidance and leadership. On behalf of the joint system, we thought it would be, take the opportunity to bring up some of the directors that have known you a little bit longer, to present you with a plaque. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Catherine Rubin and I think Tom DeSmith.
Thank you, thank you, John. My name is Catherine Rubin. I'm the Director of Corporate Environmental Affairs. And Aram, on behalf of the joint system, myself and my colleagues that stand here today, we're here to deliver this plaque that John has in his hand over there in our sincere acknowledgement of your committed leadership, inspiration, and abiding friendship over the many challenging but productive years together. We offer this plaque in celebration to commemorate your stewardship, Aram, which has delivered the city of Los Angeles, the LADWP, and its ratepayers at a threshold poison-ready for the exceedingly complex and variable electrification and water issues that lie ahead for the city of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the country. Thank you so much, Aram, for always being there and your unwavering support. You elevated the focus on both the environment and sustainability, and our division so appreciated that. Now I'd like to turn it over to Tom and our other colleagues.
Good morning. I'm Tom DeSmith, Director of Facility Services. I've had a privilege to be able to work with Aram for about the last year and a half, directly reporting to him, and honored to be able to work on some of the projects that he has brought forth. As has been stated here, we all know that he's a very innovative thinker. But it's, when you've had some one-on-one meetings with him, it just completely blows your mind where his, where his mind is. And his love for this department comes through in everything, every day, his dedication. He's here early, he's here late, hardest working guy that I've ever seen here. And what really stands out about Aram is the love and care that he expresses to every employee here, regardless, like Gus mentioned, depending, it doesn't matter what your job is, he takes the time to get to know you. And when you walk away from that conversation, you really feel like you're a friend of his. And I'm very fortunate to feel like this is my brother right here. So congratulations, and I know I'll try to keep honoring you by getting all these projects out of the hopper, so.
Thank you. I'm not going to look at you, Mr. Benjamin. Commissioner Pender knows what a big baby I am. But definitely, it is a pleasure to be up here to congratulate you on your retirement. I think I better read now so I can get through it. But what I wanted to say was, Aram, your leadership has been an inspiration to us all. And your impact reaches far beyond the walls of this department. You've sacrificed, guided, and lifted others with grace and purpose. You're leaving behind a legacy of excellence and integrity. And while it's hard to say goodbye, I am deeply grateful for everything that you've given. Thank you for your service. I wish you all the best in this well-deserved next chapter. And thank you to your family as well, because I personally know the sacrifices that you have made for the department. Thank you for everything.
So, Aram, we want to grant you, or give you, give you this plaque, an appreciation of your leadership and dedication. Thank you. Thank you. Where do you want to stand?
At least one.
Have I missed anyone?
Real quick, Aram, on behalf of the Legal Department, I want to thank you so much. Nobody likes to talk to us or help us, which I understand, so... Aram was always our first call. He's always been so helpful on a personal level for me. I came here a couple of years ago, and he, he was so patient with me, explaining things to me. Obviously, I didn't know anything, and he was really helpful to me. So, Aram, on a personal note, I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Well, we're about there, Aram. I'm not sure... I'm, I'm pretty confident, everything that could be said has been said, or at least written. And it doesn't begin, I think, to encapsulate your career. You know, it's, it's impressive, your commitment, and the city is so much better off for your being a part of it and for everything you've brought to this department and to the City of LA. I personally appreciate, you know, you're, you're taking me under your wing and explaining to me that I shouldn't be testing nine-volt batteries with my tongue anymore. There's equipment that does that now. And considering that we use much higher voltage than that around here, it's not a good career move. But, no, I seriously appreciate your willingness to explain things in terms that, that lay people understand and that those of us that are learning understand, and your patience with us is appreciated. And as I said, I think, I don't think, people of LA, I think, know what a great department this is, and the women and men of this department do an amazing job, day in and day out, night in and night out, 24/7. And you've led them, and you've helped them, and you've helped make this department what it is today. And, you know, we, we got that report from J.D. Powers and Associates, you know, about six months ago, about how our department moved in sustainability, I think it was from like number 10 in the country to number one in the country. And that's a pretty impressive jump. And, you know, you've been a big part of leading that, so, you know, both in the past and for the future, you've put this department on a great course, and we are eternally grateful to you for it. And don't be surprised if you get a call from time to time from somebody saying, like me, "What is this they're talking about?", you know, or "Can you put it into fewer-syllable words so I can understand it?", you know, things like that. But, you know, but making, but making something that can be very complicated and very difficult, easy for everyone to understand at the same time. You talk to the people who, who do the work and understand what it takes, and that's a unique skill, and we are grateful that you shared it with us for all these years.
So, thank you. Thank you, Chair Katz and Commissioners, thank you. This is overwhelming, the love and, and the camaraderie and the relationships that I've had over the years, over the decades. So, thank you for everybody being here or watching on, on the T, on the channel. Thanks to Gus, the IBW family. Thank you for everybody that's been there, the management, and I really appreciate the recognition, and thank you for reading that long resolution. But just to summarize, and, you know, when I came to this country, I was, as a teenager, 1977, I went through school, and the first organization that I walked into was this organization in 1980. When I first got oriented into the department, at that time, the general manager was Paul Lane, and he came to talk to the new recruits, and I was sitting there, 22-year-old, didn't know anything about the country, didn't know anything about the culture, didn't know anything about what was this organization all about. And he was talking about being a civil servant, and I didn't understand a word he said at that time. But over the years, as I reflected, it's the most rewarding and the most honorable thing that somebody can do is serve the public. So, that recognition is, is very appreciated, and as civil servants, we just do our job and do our mission and just disappear in the background, and that's, that's who we are. That's what the 11,000 employees of this place does every day. They're 24/7, they're out there in the middle of the night, they're, they're turning the power on, they're, they're, they're making sure the water is safe, the, the, the public is protected, and, and recognition is not something that they're after. They're behind the scenes, they're doing it. The most important thing to me in all these decades is the relationship and the hard work that our employees do. I'm so proud to work side by side with them. They're the most ethical, hardworking, and most productive people that, that's out there. So, my message to the employees is, don't let anybody tell you otherwise. You are, you are the jewel of the city, and everything that we've done so far and everything that we're going to do in the future, it all depends on you and is on your shoulder. So, if your brother or sister is falling behind and they're not pulling in their, their, their ethical and, and obligation and their service obligation to the city, give them a hand, pull them up with you, make sure that they're doing their job. There's nothing else in this city that makes this city work except the hard work of our employees, and I'm so proud of them. I will forever be thankful for having the opportunity to work with one of the best, well-trained, well-equipped, the most professional workforce I've ever worked with. And thanks to IBW and, and, and the programs that we've done together over the years, it shows, it shows that when you care about the employees, when you care, the, the rewards are, are tenfold coming back to you. So, I appreciate all the staff that are, that are here. I will forever be your, supporting you as I watch, you know, the development of what's going on. And for the employees, you know, I'm, I'm so honored and I'm so proud to be, at least be called as peers to you. And again, thank you for the board for taking the time. I know we've, we've spent a lot of time that I don't think, you know, it's something that I expected, but thank you again for making the time and, and having this recognition.
All right. It's our honor and our pleasure, and I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do it. I don't think anybody expects you to go quietly into the next part of your life. Quietly is not something you do well. So, we expect to hear, hear from you and, and hear what you're doing and, you know, wish you nothing but, but a long life, much health and happiness, and a lot of good family time also.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate everything.
On behalf of the board, let me present this to you on, all of us. Where do you want us?
Ideally in the middle, but now with the big chair. Would you mind just standing in the middle?
Arm?
Yeah. Well, actually, I guess not.
Very nice. Is the lower problem coming tomorrow? Thank you. Thank you. So, tomorrow? Tomorrow, 1:30? I'm going to frame that for you, okay? Thanks. Tomorrow, 1:30 in the cafeteria. Right to you again. Appreciate it. Thank you, bud. Okay. Any public comment? Can we do a public comment next? And then after public comment, we're going to do a 40-year pin for someone, sort of a short timer compared to Aram there, just a four.
Public comment is open at this time. We have five speakers. Good morning, speakers. Please be mindful that you will have two minutes to address the, the board. The first speaker is Connor Everts, who will be followed by Melanie Paula Torres. Connor Everts?
Sorry, it takes a second. Thank you very much, Connor Everts, Southern California Watershed Alliance and other groups. I didn't realize how touching it would be for the retirement. It was interesting to listen while waiting. Outside, they told me you weren't starting yet. Between the silent movie at the beginning to the bounce back on the sound, I'm glad we're all in the same room at this point. So, once again, I'm here asking that we fulfill what we felt by a joint letter to the mayor, taking 4,500 acre-feet, not the full 16,000, out of Mono Lake. Again, I've mentioned my pass of riding a bicycle there, and this year, seeing it for our 30th anniversary of the State Water Resource Control Board at its highest level. So, I hope you take this time to realize things are going on. I realize it is, it is dry and hot, and I saw fires on the ridge from my window this morning. But we should always be planning for the driest day plus winter, and we should be doing it more programs, like the Pure Water Program that I went to Hyperion last week, and I appreciate staff on that as well. If I, I don't see a timer. But if I have just a second, too, I will speak with my colleagues on the challenges of technology, which I mentioned with your speakers earlier. It applies to other things as well. Green hydrogen sounds like the shiny new thing, but there are issues that we're concerned about, and others will fill in more details. To me, it remains, again, the one issue that I got sucked into by the intakes years ago, ocean desalination, which LA properly decided, LADWP and the city properly decided to put off while you did all the other local water programs. Thank you very much for your time.
Connor, thank you.
The next speaker is Melanie Paula Torres, who will be followed by Brandon Itzel.
Hello, my name is Melanie Paula Torres. I live in Arlita and a lifelong resident of Los Angeles, and I'm an LADWP ratepayer. I'm also a community organizer with BoCoima Beautiful. We're an environmental justice nonprofit serving the northeast San Fernando Valley. Our mission is to educate, advocate for local policy change, and celebrate arts and culture to create a healthier, more sustainable San Fernando Valley. Every year, we work and support between 15,000 and 20,000 community members. I'm here to ta, I'm here today to speak on behalf of Mono Lake, a place that's become so much more than just a destination for our community. Through BoCoima Beautiful, I've had the privilege of bringing residents from Arlita, BoCoima, and Panorama City into Mono Lake. These trips provide an opportunity for people, especially those from frontline communities, to connect with nature, understand where our water comes from, and witness firsthand the importance of conservation and ecological balance. For many, it's the first time they experience such a place, seeing the birds, the still water and the land's beauty, and learning how their lives are interconnected with it. Unfortunately, DWP has exported about 6,000 acre-feet of water from Mono Lake, and exports continue at the alarming rate of one acre foot every 20 minutes. These diversions jeopardize the recovery of the lake, harm its ecosystem, and worsen air quality in the surrounding region. Mono Lake is more than just a body of water, it is a living classroom and a source of inspiration. When our community visits, they see what's at stake, they return home with a deeper understanding of environmental justice and the urgency to care for our shared resources. But if LADWP continues taking water, the lake's recovery will stall and we lose, and we risk losing this vital place forever. We cannot allow Mono Lake to disappear for our communities, for the environment, and for future generations who deserve to learn from and experience its beauty. We must act now to protect it. Thank you. Please review the letters that we have passed out for your reference. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brandon Itzel, who will be followed by Andrea Leon Grossman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brandon Itzel. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Morello Enterprises. We are the parent company of Herman Weiskir Power. I'm here today to provide, provide comment on Agenda Item 19, opposing the recommendation to award contract 595 to Parkea. HW Power submitted a low bid that was $959,000 lower than second-place bidder Parkea. However, the application of a million-dollar credit for the Local Business Preference Program pushed HW Power's ranking to second, and Parkea is now being recommended for the award. While we acknowledge the reasoning behind denying our formal protest on the grounds of HW Power's application being submitted after the bid due date, HW Power meets the requirements for the program and has since submitted all of the documentation, and we are awaiting award or approval. We fully support the intention and the goals behind the Local Business Preference Program, but application of the credit to one local business without affording the same credit to another local business due to an administrative error does not align with the intentions of the program. More importantly, awarding the contract to Parkea will ultimately drive up the cost to the ratepayers. A million-dollar delta is substantial, especially in the inflationary environment that we live in today. Division B-2, Section 3A of the IFB allows LADWP to make a discretionary decision not to apply the credit if it's not within LADWP's best interest to grant a bid preference. This ability for a discretionary decision is in place exactly for situations like this, where it would not be in the best interest of LADWP to award a bid that is nearly a million dollars higher, when the lower bidder also meets the requirements of the Local Business Preference Program. Thank you all, we appreciate your time and consideration.
Did you say that your company, or the company you're speaking on behalf of, missed the date that was due to submit this contract?
So, we submitted the bid proposal. We did not have our application through the RAMP system to be approved as a local business program. Our team assumed that we already had the certification.
Thank you.
So, yep, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrea Leon Grossman, who will be followed by Daryl Buckley.
Hi, I just want to make sure that I can speak on Item 29.
Please proceed.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman, Deputy Program Director at Vote Solar for the West. And I am speaking today as an expert in renewable energy, as an environmental justice advocate, and a concerted ratepayer. I strongly urge LADWP to reject the proposed scattergood hydrogen project. This is not a modernization project, it's a regression project. The draft environmental impact report isn't even finalized. The public hasn't had a first fair opportunity to evaluate or provide input on the environmental consequences of this plan. Moving forward without completing the outreach undermines public trust and transparency. LADWP is uniquely positioned to lead the charge on distributed energy resources, DERs, and virtual power plants, BPPs. Yet, these innovative and safer solutions were not even considered as a viable alternative for scattergood. Instead, explosive and polluting hydrogen energy near critical infrastructure like LAX and the Hyperion Water Treatment Plant, we should be focused on deploying proven clean technologies that benefit all Angelenos. Soca Gas and Arches argue that we don't understand hydrogen, and this was just a couple of weeks ago at a workshop that I attended, meaning us environmentalists and EJ advocates, because it's new. The reality is that we do understand it, and we also know we have better, cleaner options available today. We don't need underground hydrogen storage facilities, we need leadership that prioritizes public safety and clean energy solutions. Please unapprove this project. Angelenos deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Daryl Buckley.
All right. Good morning, President Katz, Commissioners, and the rest of the LADWP staff. My name's Daryl Buckley, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for Parkea, and I'm here today to support... And I'm here today to support, obviously, contract Item 19, 595, for the Underground Cable Replacement Program. For those of you that don't know, I committed 28 years of service here at LADWP, retired as a Transmission and Distribution District Supervisor for dedicated service, and was an instrumental part of putting together the original power reliability plan, getting that pushed through, working with all the staff that you see over here, along with Aaron Benjamin and the other managers. So, I know the importance of this contract and the importance of all the bidders submitting the proper documentation. I'm excited and, as along with my team, to get started on this contract. We're ready to go, and I'm looking forward to helping DWP move forward with providing decisions of Los Angeles' safety and quality power system. Thank you.
Are there any speakers here for Item 30 or 31, Michael Gray or Joe Villarreal? There were two e-commerce comments that were submitted to the board and distributed. Public comment is now closed at this time.
All right. We're now going to... Two things. Number seven and number three are also deferred to the next meeting. So, that'd be 18, 7, and 3 have all been pushed.
And what was the recusal?
Number 21. Thank you. Recusal on 21.
Recusal for?
Pender.
For Pender. Again. Okay. And George wanted to make sure that, well, 3 we kicked, but 14 and 19, we hear separately, then...
Yeah, it's a little special.
Yes. You got that? 14 and 19? Okay. Okay. He's little faith. Okay. Andrew Garcia. Andy Garcia, where are you, Andy? They're letting you sit now, huh? Why don't you stand up and let everybody see you? Want to tell everybody a little bit about Andy, who's here for a special presentation today. Andy's okay, not Andrew. It's Andy. Yeah. For a 40-year service pin, which is worth recognizing, and thanking you and congratulating you. Andy was born in Mexico, lived in El Paso, Texas, before moving to California, grew up in East LA and Alhambra, attended East LA College, worked various jobs before beginning his city career in 1983. As a meter reader at DWP, he worked his way up the ranks. As a reread specialist, senior meter reader and team leader, he continued his upward trajectory promoting to commercial field rep in 1990, field investigator in 2001, field investigations coordinator in '09, for being appointed to his current role as Assistant Supervisor in the Harbor Field Group in 2015. Andy is a serious, no-nonsense supervisor. He knows how to make his team laugh. He's known for his wit and often sharing funny stories about his life experiences with coworkers and staff. He also enjoys sharing his knowledge and experience with others, and many people depend on his expertise. Outside of work, he's known to everyone as Uncle Andy or Android, and he has a... Is it like Android but devoid of feeling, or? Because I mean, I hear a lot of, you know, feeling a good guy over here and then gets Android, so... It's an interesting combination, dude, is that. But he's known for swapping funny stories about his life experience with coworkers and staff, which I just read. Uncle Andy or Android, and as a loving and dedicated father, husband, son, brother, uncle, friend, and mentor, often the center of attention, you'll always find him among family and friends. He's a fan of the outdoors and enjoys off-roading, hiking, beach trips, attending his children's sports events, other activities, and of course, Rams games. Good game last week. That was... It was fun to get... Andy, your dedication of more than 40 years of civil service is a rare achievement and deeply appreciated. You have often mentioned that you should have been retired by now. We're glad that you stayed and been able to impact so many of your cohorts during your tenure. Congratulations on 42 years of service at DWP. We're looking forward to the next 42, so... Or at least a couple of them, but are glad that you're still with us and a very valuable member of the DWP family. So, I'm going to present this pin to you with our thanks and appreciation.
Oh, please.
Schedules are on, but sometimes necessity dictates, and we appreciate your understanding, and like I said, we appreciate your sharing Android with us. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. Now, we'll go back to the regular boring stuff that we do. They're on the agenda. It's on the agenda. Comments by Commissioners? Anything we've not said that needs to be said? No, no, I'm not. You're up.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President and Commissioners. I am here today on behalf of our CEO and Chief Engineer, Janice Quinones, who is traveling today to Washington DC to participate in the Large Public Power Council Winter Meetings. First item I wanted to share with you about, and we have some photos that we'll show on the screen for folks to see, is about our Eland Solar and Storage Project. At our most recent monthly Town Hall for Employees, we heard from Dan Beazey about Eland Solar and Storage, a new project that's come online and will continue to come online through February. It will capture 400 megawatts of solar energy and store up to 1,200 megawatt hours of energy. There was a very nice piece on it, if you didn't see, in Sammy Roth's column in the LA Times.
Great piece, John. Well done.
And we got it. It appeared in print yesterday, if you didn't see it as well, on Page 2. So, it was very nice coverage, a really nice partnership there to share really a lot of in-depth information about this remarkable project. So, it's a pleasure to do that. And also, we had an event last week that our CEO, Dave Hanson, Deputy Mayor Nancy Setley, and Commissioner Katz, Nureet Katz, were there to mark the occasion of the conclusion of Phase 1, empowering that. It was nice to get together with the project team and partners to celebrate this accomplishment up just outside of Mojave. The second item was a press event that our CEO participated in together with the mayor on Friday. The mayor held an annual event that she's holding now to celebrate sustainability accomplishments in the city. It was held at the DOT Electric Bus Yard, and we provided remarks there about Eland, about the Tillman Project for the LA groundwater replenishment project there, as well as highlights on our energy efficiency, EV adoption, and our EV hubs that are coming to Panorama City and Harbor Gateway, as well as the Heat Relief for Seniors Program. We had some of our fantastic EV-heavy equipment there as well, that Janice enjoyed moving around and piloting for a while as well. So, it was very nice to join the mayor for that. I had a great media turnout and good coverage as well of that event marking our accomplishments. In addition, we had some follow-up to Veterans Day, and there's some slides on this as well. As you know, after our last board meeting, we unveiled our portraits and public service exhibit in the JFB lobby, really, our tribute to the veterans of this department, who not only serve the public here in LA, but serve our country. The, our members of our board, Board President Katz, Valor President Patrick Horton, Dave Hanson provided remarks, had a beautiful ceremony there and a beautiful exhibit. If you haven't seen it, certainly would invite you, as well as employees and members of the public, to view it on a lobby level. The event really was incredibly well-done, and we're proud of the contributions and sacrifices made by all of our employees that we were able to celebrate then and throughout the month of November. Piggybacking on that, our Dave Hanson participated last week as a speaker at the Veterans Resource Fair hosted by Councilmember Tracy Park of CD11. Thank you, Dave. This was held at the New Directions for Veterans Facility near Westwood, where Dave discussed recruitment and our new Valor Employee Resource Group. This was Valor's first external outreach event as part of its objectives to assist with veteran recruitment for LADWP. With that, I would like to turn it over to Anselmo Collins, who can give us an update on a Stakeholder Engagement Meeting that occurred last week, as well as an update on our water supply.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Darrell. So, yes, so, on the 3rd of December, we held a Stakeholder Engagement Group Meeting. The purpose of that was to get feedback from the stakeholders on the Pure Water Los Angeles Program. As you know, Pure Water Los Angeles is a combination of what used to be Hyperion 2035 and Operation Next. It's been combined now. So, the idea was to have an opportunity, now that we're getting close to completing the master plan, to get some feedback from the community and from folks that are very interested in recycled water as a source of water for the city of LA. I think we had approximately 40 attendees at this meeting. It was well-attended. I think in general, comments were very positive. Myself, as well as Barbara Romero, who's the General Manager at Ely Sanitation, were in attendance, along with the key staff from LADWP and Ely San. Like I said, the comments were very positive, very supportive. Obviously, a lot of questions about funding, about the schedule, about, they liked the fact that we consolidated the program into one, and also about workforce development, the great opportunity that exists for the Department and Ely San to provide for great-paying jobs moving forward as we develop this program. So, all in all, it was a great opportunity. The event took place down at Hyperion at their Learning Center, and I think it was a great success.
And then the water supply update, Anselmo?
Sure. Every year, when we get to this time of year, I like to provide the board with an update on what we're doing with water supply, especially when we have years that are a bit dry. As you know, the water year just started. However, I wanted to make sure you were aware of where we are at this point. The Department of Water Resources, starting in December, usually will come out with their first allocation for the state water project that just came out, and the allocation at this point is 5%. That means that if you're a contractor with a state water project, right now, all you would get is 5%. That equates approximately 100,000 acre feet of water for the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, which is who we purchase our water from, from the state water project. At the same time, in the Colorado River, things are still not looking that great. Lake Mead is around 33% full, and Lake Powell is around 37% full. So, as you can tell, they're still quite low at this point. As far as the LA Aqueduct itself, we had an atmospheric river that hit the eastern Sierra just before Thanksgiving, and it did provide us with a couple of inches, I think like 5 inches, of snow water equivalent or water content in the snow. Unfortunately, there is a ridge of high pressure there, which is keeping away any future storms. We are tracking some coming down, but right now, we're getting no precipitation. So, our average is once again dipping down because we've gotten no precipitation in the last few days. If you don't mind, Joe, I also wanted to touch a little bit on Tillman. As you know, this board approved the MOA with Ely Sanitation a few board meetings ago. I'm happy to report that it was approved by the Board of Public Works on the 27th of November. The project team actually started work on December 2nd, so we're off and running. And just as a reminder, the goal is to have the project completed by 2027. So, we have a very aggressive schedule. The one thing I also wanted to offer is that we're going to be producing a supplemental SEQA document, and this is specifically for the Japanese gardens that are co-located where Tillman is. It's an opportunity for us to be able to use an additional 4 million gallons of water that runs through the Japanese garden and gets dumped into the Ely River. We'll be able to recycle it so that we can maximize the amount of water that we're recycling for the purpose of groundwater recharge. That will bring us to 25 million gallons a day. So, we're going to circulate the supplemental SEQA document. It should be going out on Thursday. It'll be out for review for at least 90 days, perhaps a little more, and then at some point, we'll come back to the board for consideration on that SEQA document, and that's it. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. We also have... We have a question, sure. Okay. Anselmo, I remember on our timeline for Operation Next, we expected the master plan to be submitted to the board by this December's meeting, and obviously, with Pure Water's integration of Hyperion 2030, the timeline has shifted. Where are we on the next deadline to receive the master plan here?
So, the master plan will be received, the final master plan will be received by DWP by, in the next couple of days, actually, by the end of the year.
Okay.
Then, my staff, along with Ely San, are going to work together on it. My goal is to bring it to the board in the first quarter 2025. So, but we have been reviewing it. We've gotten a 90% review, just making some final fine tunes on it, but we should have the final document by the end of the year.
Will we get it at the mayor's climate cabinet first, and then it'll be at this meeting? Or how's that going to work?
We can certainly provide it for the mayor's water cabinet. I think it'll be great for you and Commissioner Katz, as well as the board members from Public Works, to take a look at it, and also be able to engage with staff and ask whatever questions. So, to me, that would make sense, sir.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. And just a shout-out to Catherine Rubin and her team for that supplemental EIR for the Japanese garden. That's really exciting.
Yes.
I don't know if you got a note yet, but you were going to get a note about, you're going to tell us something about flows at Mono?
Didn't get that note, but I can talk about it, absolutely. So, the Department of Water and Power, every year is required to do an annual operation plan for the basins. In Mono Basin, the water rights that the city of LA has are what they call post-1914, which means they're controlled by the State Water Resources Control Board. Based on the elevation of Mono Lake, the city of LA has the ability to export up to 16,000 acre feet of water. There was a request that was made by the Mono Lake Committee earlier this year to the mayor's office to limit the export to 4,500. The city of LA, LADWP, agreed to initially take the 4,500 with the caveat that we would evaluate operation, what's going on in the system, and then make a determination if we needed to take additional water. Based on the fact that we are facing a La Nina year, meaning a drier-than-normal year, the decision was made to continue to export past the 4,500. Right now, we've exported approximately 5,700 acre feet of water, but we are monitoring the situation. Clearly, if the climate changes and we have significant snowpack, we can make operational changes. But just to offer to this board, when we're doing the operations along the aqueduct, especially in the Mono Basin, it's a combination of not just the elevation of Mono Lake. It is also, a factor has to do with the elevation of Grant Lake, which we need to monitor. If it goes too low, below 36,000 acre feet, then we're not allowed to export at all, so we have to manage that. We also have to manage the environment. If we hold back the water and we spill during the winter, there's a potential impact to the fish along Rush Creek, which is also a requirement the department has to ensure the well-being of the fish along the creek. So, looking at all that, and also looking at our needs, and when we can move the water, that's the reason we made a decision to continue flowing. But we have been in communication with the Mono Lake Committee. I personally spoke to the executive officer yesterday, and we have agreed to have additional conversations as well. And those will be taking place... conversations as well, and those will be taking place either this week or next week.
I also, though, understand that we've reduced, we've reduced the flow from 45 cubic feet to 35.
To 35, correct, yes.
So we're taking, slowing, we're slowing the take right now.
Yes, we have slowed that down. That change took place this morning, and I double-checked, and it's been done. So right now, it is 35 cubic feet per second. And the range in our operations plan had a minimum of 35, a maximum of 50. Now we're at the bottom of that range.
And, yeah, and as you mentioned, so we're going to do sometime in the next two weeks, a technical meeting we were discussing?
Yes, so there's a couple of meetings. So we are setting up a meeting with the Mono Lake Committee. It'll be my staff, as well as the Mono Lake Committee staff, to have a deeper discussion about the drivers that, and the factors that we need to consider as we operate the aqueduct. There's also a meeting on the 20th of the month, and that's a more expanded meeting that includes not only the Mono Lake Committee, it also includes the State Board, it includes the EPA. That's a more expansive discussion, talking about more in general, the operations of the Mono Basin, and potentially, a hearing that may take place sometime in 2025. So there'll be a couple of meetings in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think, I thought the 2025 hearing, other than it was agreed to move forward, it just hadn't, the date hadn't been set yet on that.
The hearing is, was put on the list of strategic priorities for the State Board, and my informal conversations with members of the State Board staff is that it's probably going to happen in 2025. It has not been calendared yet, but there's a high likelihood that it will take place. I am having additional conversations and meetings with some of the State Board members and some of their leadership to get some clarity in that as well, but most likely, there will be a hearing in 2025, yes.
Great, thanks, Anselmo.
Thank you.
We have an additional update from our Senior Assistant General Manager for Power System, Dave Hanson.
Thank you, Joe. Always difficult to follow this, but I'll keep it brief. Recently, on Saturday, November 30th, we had a large transformer failure downtown at our receiving station P. I'm sure many of you saw it in the news, so it was a total loss of a very large power transformer. We did have quite a few 34.5 customers out. To us, it's quite a few, 153 34.5 customers. That could be apartment complexes and what have you, so multiple customers in that same area. So it was restored same day. The response was excellent. We did have a little breakdown in communication for about a couple of hours, but we're looking into that. So Marciano Navar, Director of Power Construction and Maintenance, Wave Rocky, he's going to be conducting the root cause analysis to see what to actually cause that transformer to fail. We are treating this as an emergency, so we will be pushing forward with some emergency purchase orders to be able to move that equipment. These transformers are very large. Think of it as moving the space shuttle. It's the very similar equipment, so it's something that we have to bring in a contractor to be able to do. So we've worked with them, got a quote, and hopefully, we'll be moving that out here pretty shortly. Also, it is a re-
Before you go past that, Dave just said the response was impressive, and the amount of time that y'all were able to redirect power so that the outages were minimal was very impressive considering the intensity of that fire.
Yeah, it was. We saw a lot of social media video coverage of the fire, a lot of people filming from rooftops, so we actually have some pretty good video on it. Maybe we should hire these people. But it was a very impressive response, a quick cleanup, restoration. They were able to take oil samples right away and figure out how much oil had potentially been released, so it was impressive to see. Myself and CEO Janice Quinones went out there on Saturday to go meet with the crews, and we were watching the managers take care of them and get water delivered and food so everybody could kind of keep working in the, in the emergency environment. So it's good to go out there and visit the field at any time, specifically on something like that. It's nice to see our crews coming together and working towards a resolution, so.
Great job.
Yeah, it was good. And also, we have a red flag warning yesterday, today, through tomorrow, so we are taking our normal precautions for the power system, and we do have crews that don't traditionally work 24/7. We have them on standby and rotation, so that's it. Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
No questions, but I did just want to comment more formally in the board, as I did on the visit to Elon. I just want to congratulate you and the team. This is a major milestone for Los Angeles in terms of moving us towards our clean energy future, bringing us beyond 60% renewables, and I know there was a lot of work and a lot of years that went into that. It was very powerful to see the scale of operations out there, and as I mentioned on site, I also really look forward to working with the power team to identify best practices as we balance the needs of, you know, desert ecology with developing solar out there, and that we continue to drive our in-basin programs like the Feed and Tariff Program and Community Solar and all the different solutions we'll need. But we have a lot more to build yet, so look forward to working together on that, and I just want to congratulate you and the team.
Thank you for saying that. A lot of hard work went into that, and my appreciation goes out to the team as well. And a lot of times on these PPAs, the power purchase agreements, we think of it as contracting it out, but there's still a lot of in-house labor support that takes to expand our station to be able to test and commission and bring these projects online. So although it is a PPA, there was an extensive labor component on that project. So thank you for saying that.
I have one additional item. Wanted to take a moment to introduce a new member of our team who joined us very recently. Zariah Oliver Griffin is our Chief Emergency Management Officer. Zariah will also be handling some major projects, including L.A. 28. Welcome, Zariah. Thank you.
Welcome.
And that's the end of our report.
I like the way you sort of had through L.A. 28, and oh, by the way. Other duties as assigned.
That's right, always. Thank you very much.
All right. Oh, let's see. Dr. Pickle?
I will have comments during the special for the ECAF, item 19.
Okay.
And other questions as they may arise.
Understand. All right. So what items? There we go. Okay, so the items that are before us are items 1, 2, 4, 6, 8, 13, 15, 16, 17, 20, 22, and 31.
I'm sorry, maybe we do that, but does that mean we're not doing five?
There were, yeah, there were a few others that I didn't think were.
Special, but that didn't make that list.
I can do a motion if helpful.
No. Good.
Sorry, I'll.
For those following at home, the items are 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31.
Second?
Motion, a second. Any objection to all members present?
On that one, 21, we're going to do separately?
Yes.
Yeah, he left it out.
He did, okay, perfect, thank you.
Would you do that one first, so I can step away now and then come back and be fully present for the others?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I have a motion on 21 and a second.
Second.
And reflects that Commissioner Pender's decision on that item.
Okay.
Any objection to the rest of us being I-votes on that? Sing none? That has passed. And if you would let Ms. Pender know that she's welcome to rejoin us? Is everyone clear on what's on the block?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay, just want to make sure.
All right.
Without objection, a motion and a second, and all members present being recorded as I-votes on those, then those items will be deemed adopted.
A correction on my part. I will be commenting on item 14, not 19.
Okay. Why don't we do 14 now?
Yes.
You want a 14 and 19?
I do want 14 and 19. I just, you know, number 14, and we do this every quarter, and, you know, calculating the ECAF, I wanted to ask you what you and your office are seeing as sort of the macroeconomic forces behind the 9% raise. I think, you know, better understanding some of the cost pressures that we're under before we adopt this, so that rate peers kind of have those on the record would be really helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. The main item that's causing this 9% is the base rate revenue target. That was increased as part of the fiscal year 23, 24. However, energy sales, because of conservation, more modern technology, has dropped. So we estimate a cent per kilowatt hour for that as part of the energy cost adjustment factor, which came in under than anticipated. I think it was about 4.3% under. So that's the main driver that was added to the balancing account for the energy cost adjustment factor, and so that is going to be recovered over the next 12 months. And so we're asking for the board's approval for that estimate to put into our balance so that that way, we can continue to do the billing, and then we'll continue to true it up, you know, sales may increase because of additional warmer climate or more electrification of electric vehicles and such, but that's the main driver.
That's super helpful. And so that, that rate change will take effect January 1st?
Correct.
And then we'll also readjust those estimates for the 25, 26?
Yes, once, yes, we'll come back to the board every year. I believe it's June where we come back and we say the base rate revenue target based on inflation is a certain percent, and fiscal year 23, 24 was the largest increase because it's delayed. So when we had that big 5.9% increase in inflation, that's the fiscal year that it impacted.
Okay, that's super helpful. So the sort of bottom line of this is that people aren't using as much energy, mostly due to conservation, as we thought, and we have to true up the account.
Correct.
And that's the 9% hit we're going to take.
I would add to that. It isn't just conservation, but it's also more adoption of net energy metering solar as part of the equation. And one of the issues here is it's, we're long past time for a rate review.
Very much.
And cost of service analysis would show that residential is a smaller share of the load, and that means more of the cost would be allocated away from residential and to other customer classes. But residents of the city, since the businesses that remain on the city are largely supporting people in the city, it's, goes out of their electric bill and into the local business bill, which the locals will end up paying for anyway because of the costs, their costs.
That's all I had.
Just take it out of your right pocket or your left pocket?
Yeah, exactly.
But it's coming.
Can't rob Peter to pay Paul.
But it's the same problem, you know, we saw when Metropolitan Water raised the rates earlier in the year.
Yeah.
Because of the, you know, and it sounds so counterintuitive, but the success of the conservation programs were so great, was so great, that they had to increase rates to make up for the lack of revenue because that revenue is what pays for their system.
The trick is to out conserve your neighbor.
Right.
Or the old two runners and a bear joke.
Do the whole thing.
One runner leans down and starts tying his shoes, and the other runner says, "You aren't going to outrun a bear." He said, "No, no, I just need to outrun you."
I know that feeling, but anyhow, thank you, Dr. Pickle.
So who are we outrunning?
Each other.
Okay. Should have stayed mum.
Okay, it's been one of those mornings. All right, so that takes, any other questions?
I move to approve it.
On item 19?
I'd like to add one other thing.
Yes.
It's helpful to look long-term, looking at the current financial plans. If you look out over a five-year period, either five or six years, the average increase is about 6.8%. So this was above the norm.
Due to the inflation?
Due to the inflation.
There's some lagging inflationary pressure.
That one big year of inflation.
But the pressures on conservation and net energy metering remain.
I look forward to the adjustment we make, because President-elect Trump has said that he would end inflation on the first day in office, so. Let's see what happens. I shouldn't count on the lower rate immediately, Fred? No?
No. The trick to forecasting is give a date, don't give a, don't give an amount. Give an amount, don't give a date.
And do it while you're leaving the meeting. Yeah. All right. Anything else on item 19?
I move to approve item 14? 14? Or do you want to do 19 first?
14, we can do both at the same time.
Okay.
14, we had all, we had it.
14's the one we're discussing now.
Yeah.
Yep.
And 19?
Did you still have questions?
I do have some questions on 19.
Okay, go ahead.
Mostly, anytime I see a big contract like this, I want to talk to the, you know, the power system about our plans as to, you know, how much of this capacity we're trying to bring in-house with our union partners, you know, noting that, you know, in the board letter for this contract was a big admission that we just don't have the internal capacity to do this work ourselves, which is why we're going out to contracting to meet our long-term power planning goals. You know, I know as part of that contract negotiation practice with our, you know, our labor partners, that we submit some plans about, you know, how much of that capacity to build internally going forward, and I'm wondering what the plan is here. And then I'd love to talk about the contract amount, but can we go there first?
So, so as part of the contract process, as you know, the NOC with Local 18, we do come to a mutual agreement on building out the additional staffing for our underground crews. Anytime we enter into this agreement, there's always the Appendix B overtime that's in the MOU, which is guaranteed 10% for bargaining, in bargaining unit work. For this contract, I believe, Lucian, I'm going to make eye contact with you, what was the amount for the overtime guaranteed? Do you know? Is it 20%? I can check on that.
10%.
10%, okay, so it's standard Appendix B, so. We are looking at building out those crews. We've recently established an underground conduit training program at Truesdale, which is just getting off the ground, so we are making steps in that direction. So this is a standard renewal of a contract that'll kind of help bridge that gap, also help us do a lot of urgent underground work for MTA.
Yeah, we saw that, especially in Number 18, that we have already. Sorry, I forget about my microphone. I saw that MTA work in Number 18, too. I think, do we have a time horizon on that, sort of noting that this new, you know, underground training program is up and running at Truesdale? Is there, is there a metric or a goal we're trying to hit there in terms of our internal capacity?
Well, any of those 5.30 programs that we look at, when you look at the 10-year staffing plan, we kind of bounce it off of vacancies and growth, and over the last couple of years, we've really done a hard look with our IHRP evolution that we went through as far as what vacancies that we had. I think a few months ago, maybe sometime last year, somebody spoke for the power system in this board and said we wouldn't be asking for any new positions. I think there was a misconception of where we were really at with our APR. So we are looking at asking for new positions this year and making some growth on that side, as well as all of the 5.30 programs. We've recently split our safety and training programs to where they're separate divisions, so Brian Wilbur is now in charge of the Training Center, and Nazir Fosley has the safety component. So I think in splitting that and making them their own legit divisions helps us focus on that and gives us a higher-level managerial oversight so that we can work with the other directors on their staffing plans. I used to run one of those training programs, and when you work for Wilbur, he beats it into your head that, yes, you run the program and you report to me, but you actually work for the director that those people graduating go into, so. people graduating go into. So, we're looking forward to Brian bringing that back there so that we can stay in direct cahoots with PTD, Power Transmission and Distribution, and make sure that we're staffing their vacancies. We've also recent, I'm sorry.
Please.
We've also recently created an LMA program as well, Line Maintenance Assistant. So, tree vegetation, there's a lot of good training programs that we're just getting off the ground.
Yeah, that new classification. Yeah, I think it's really interesting, because I think one of the first meetings with IBW, I sat in with Aram, actually, and sort of germane to Anne's memory of Aram holding us together after the ninety-fourth quake, is, you know, I think there's just a tremendous amount of concern on my part that we have the internal capacity in things like underground cable splicing and management to be able to weather an earthquake without having to depend on our contractors. I think, you know, anytime we're relying on multi-year contracts that are this big for what are essentially the core business duties of our institution, I think to myself, you know, I want to see more aggressively in the board letter and in the meeting what the plan is to develop that capacity internally, understanding things like Truesdale, the training programs, new classifications that need to be approved, changes to your, you know, personnel planning and, you know, your hiring schedule. Those all help us make a determination as to whether or not we're allocating those resources in the right direction to, you know, maintain the department and the city's integrity, you know, before we have to face an emergency like that again, which is inevitable. So, that's all by way of saying that's my sort of rationale. Thanks for the info. And I would love to see some of that a little more proactively in these letters going forward. It would really help us, I think, make a more informed decision.
Okay, understood. We'll make sure that we include that a little clearly in future board letters. I can also set up a presentation from our training program and have them come in here and give the board an idea of where we're at with all of our different programs. I think to your point, we do have a nationwide shortage of linemen.
Yeah.
That is its own unique challenge. But I think when you look at some of the other support groups, like our substation electricians, operators, underground conduit vegetation, we can fill these jobs. We just had to get these training programs off the ground. And anything new like that's a little bit of a struggle with city personnel. Throw the COVID delays in there, and it is what it is. So.
Well, now, we're paying a bunch of them to do our work for us, so.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, that helps. And, you know, on the lineman thing, it has been really encouraging to see the lengths that the organization has gone to to make us more competitive in the market for those, for that smaller number of folks that's available in the talent pool. So, you know, tremendous work, you know, in the power system and in joint to make that, to make us more competitive, especially with the IOUs. Thank you for saying so.
I think it would be helpful, as Commissioner McGraw said, to have that info in the packet, but I would certainly welcome a presentation on training and perhaps also on the overall human resource planning side of LA One Hundred at a future meeting.
Will do.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear that, too. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner McGraw, for illuminating on this for us. Very helpful for me, as still a new commissioner.
Pleasure.
The motion, I thought we had a motion on, on the two of them, on fourteen and nineteen?
Yeah, I can move to adopt fourteen and nineteen again.
Second?
Motion second, without objection.
Yes.
Fine. Those two have passed. Twenty-one, we took care of. Miss Hendra. Those were all taken care of. Management reports. What do we got?
We have a presentation regarding LADWP Society for Hispanic Professional Engineers. If y'all could introduce yourselves.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, we know it's a little close to lunch, so please bear with us.
Not to worry. Speaking for myself, I'm in no danger of starving to death, so.
Good to know, good to know. Yeah, buenos dias, todos. Good morning, everyone. I'm Brianna Plankarte. I'm a Civil Engineering Associate with the Water System and President of LADWP's chapter of the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers. Presenting with me this morning are David Benitez, our Vice President of Operations, and Alberto Martinez, who is our Secretary. Before we begin, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners, our CEO and Chief Engineer, Janice Quinones, Senior Leadership, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Office, and of course, our ship familia for their support of our chapter these past four years. Our mission is to empower and support Latino engineers and STEM professionals not only within LADWP, but also in the broader community. Today, we'll be sharing some highlights of our activities from this past year, showcasing how we've aligned with ship's mission to leave a lasting impact in the communities we serve.
Hi, I'm David Benitez, Civil Engineering Associate with the Water System and LADWP Ship's Vice President of Operation. Today's agenda will primarily consist of our shipboard updates, our yearly recap, and our ship national conference highlights.
So, this year, our chapter celebrates four years. Our core values are familia, service, education, and resilience, which closely align with LADWP's mission. Familia is about fostering and uplifting and creating an inclusive community. Service emphasizes mentoring future leaders. Education promotes lifelong learning, and resilience reflects overcoming challenges and promoting innovation. Together, these values reinforce LADWP's mission to build community, drive innovation, empower a diverse workforce, and adapt to LA's evolving needs. This year, our chapter grew to a hundred and sixty-four members. Our goal is to be at two hundred members this time next year. LADWP ship unites members from all LADWP systems and across classifications, with order a quarter of our members coming from non-engineering roles, again showcasing our broad impact across the department. We'd like to take a moment to recognize LADWP ship's executive leadership team. I'd like to invite our executive board to kindly stand for recognition. Unfortunately, a lot of our members did have to take off, but I'd still like to recognize them all by name. First, we have our executive sponsor, Evelyn Cortez-Davis, who has been a great advocate and mentor for our chapter. Our past president, Wilfredo Paz Bermúdez, my soft president, Brianna Plankarte, Vice President of Operations, David Benitez, Vice President of Chapter Development, Justin Fonseca Palacios, Secretary Alberto Martinez, Treasurer Jahira Gestellem, Outreach Chairs Jacqueline Enturias and Edward Vergara, Membership Chairs David Pardo and Brendan Torres, Communications Chair Leonora Merle, Cultural Development Chair Wendy Ruiz, Elections Chair Michael Bustillo Sakai, Professional Development Chair Brian Orozco, Social Chair Yubia López Garcés, and Sheptina Chair Michelle Tovar Mora. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alberto Martinez, Civil Engineering Associate with the Water Systems and Secretary of LADWP ship. In this past year, we've continued our efforts to support our communities we serve, guided by core values, familia, service, education, and resilience. We fostered familia through general body meetings, membership drives, celebration for Dia de las Madres, Mother's Day, and Dia de los Padres, Father's Day. And for the third consecutive year, we hosted a Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead, Altar Exhibition honoring nearly thirty members of our familia who have passed. Spearheaded by Itzel Ortega Almasan, Yubia López Garcés, and Wendy Ruiz, with the support of, from DI Office, Power Construction and Maintenance, and JFP Maintenance, this event shared our Hispanic heritage with the broader community. In service to our community and to inspire the next generation of professionals, LADWP participated in local career events such as the Wilson High School Career Event, Hostetown University Tours of the LA Filtration Plant to showcase the drinking water treatment process, and facilitated mock interviews at the Humanitas Academy of Art and Technology. At the Evolution 2024 Festival, an annual event celebrating the Latino community, we presented STEM activities for K through twelve students. And these efforts empower our members to make a positive impact both professionally and in the local community. To support professional development, we hosted a California Survey Exam Review Course prepared by Roberto Sedano, Survey Supervisor in the Water Systems. Brian Orozco, our Professional Development Chair, led a tour of the Tahanga Projects, including the groundwater remediation facility and spreading grounds facilitating interdepartmental training. Additionally, we attended professional networking sessions at Cal State Long Beach and Northridge, connecting students with LADWP engineers and career opportunities. And to build on resilience and foster a supportive culture, our first Sheptina event, Comadreando con Sheptinas, or Chatting with Sheptinas, featured Sabi Valdez, Michelle Tovar Mora, and Wendy Ruiz, and inspired colleagues to advocate for equal career opportunities. We also welcomed Kathy Chavez-Morris, CEO and founder of Equidad Group, for a talk on neurodivergent awareness such as ADHD, ASD, dyslexia, and giftedness to empathize workplace inclusivity. Now, to learn more about our upcoming events, members can read our quarterly newsletter, Nexo, which spotlights chapter updates and member achievements. And this month, look for a special edition featuring ship's fiftieth anniversary at the National Convention.
So, this year, LADWP ship made history at the ship national convention, which also celebrated its fiftieth anniversary with nearly fifteen thousand attendees. The convention is an annual event that brings students and professionals to network professional development and career opportunities. This year, it had a strong presence from LADWP, thanks to the support from our CEO and Chief Engineer, Janice Quinones, Commissioner Lear, Chapter Advisor, Evelyn Cortez-Davis, LADWP Executive Management, our DEI, Recruitment, Communication, and Graphics Departments. LADWP sponsors several professional development recruitment events, furthering LADWP's commitment to diverse recruitment. Over one hundred employees from various classifications and systems attended the conventions to support recruitment and professional development. And thanks to their efforts, we raised awareness of LADWP among thousands of students and professionals, resulting in hundreds lining up for our convention events. And notably, we accepted two hundred job applications, and we extended fifteen conditional job offers. So, we look forward to continued department-wide support for future events. And to quickly summarize the four-day conference, on day one, Janice Quinones, she opened the ceremony with, she was the keynote speaker, where she shared her journey from an engineering student in Puerto Rico to the CEO and Chief Engineer of LADWP. A video highlighting LADWP's innovation was shared during the keynote, and it demonstrated our resiliency, our commitment to sustainability in the city of LA. And we'd like to share that with you if we can. I think we might have an error. But it was a...
You could skip over it.
Yeah, we'll skip over it. But it was a great video. Like I said, resiliency, show the hydro plant, it showed the renewable water project. It was a great video. And after that, because it was part of the opening ceremony, it really geared up a lot of interest among most of the attendees. Oh, there it goes.
At LADWP, we are shaping the future of Los Angeles through innovation and engineering. From the days of Mulholland and Scattergood over one hundred years ago to groundbreaking innovations today, we built LA and we're engineering its future. LADWP's legacy is etched in the city skyline, our vibrant neighborhoods, and our resilient infrastructure. Our engineers are building the backbone of a world-class metropolis. We're investing more than three billion dollars annually in our water system and cutting-edge renewable energy projects. We built the two largest ultraviolet water treatment facilities west of the Mississippi. Soon, LA will have one of the largest potable reuse projects in California, producing twenty million gallons per day of purified recycled water. And we're building the largest clean burning hydrogen power plant in the United States while working towards a hundred percent clean energy to power LA by 2035, including solar, wind, and energy storage. Our commitment to sustainability drives us, and we are pushing the boundaries of possibility to create a cleaner, greener, more resilient Los Angeles for our customers, all made possible by our diverse and talented workforce. Join us as we harness the power of human ingenuity and deliver extraordinary impact to Los Angeles. Together, we'll power the dreams of millions, ensuring a brighter future for LA's next hundred years.
So, as mentioned, it geared up a lot of interest in our company, our DWP. So, that same evening, there was two hundred and fifty students that lined up for our networking event, for the opportunity to learn more. This event was organized by Yubia López Garcés and Andrew Morales, and allowed employees to speak about their roles and the opportunities available at DWP in a casual environment. The next day, the LADWP Spotlight Luncheon, coordinated by Jorge Ibarra and Michael Bustillo Sakai, had a panel discussion involving Ofelia Rubio, Marlon Santa Cruz, Michelle Tovar Mora, and Eric Avila, showcasing job responsibilities, career opportunities, company culture, and workforce diversity among our employees. The following day, our workshop, Closer Success, by Leonora Meroth, equipped students with interview preparation skills. And our very own, Anselmo Collins, he was awarded with ship's Executive Achievement Award for his accomplishments and contribution to the community. Congratulations, Anselmo. And finally, the convention concluded with the career fair, where over five hundred students visited LADWP's recruitment booths. So, as we look to the future, we are driven by our values, and we continue to encourage our members to be role models and create a supportive inclusive familia. We will continue to develop relationships with our communities to service our local K through twelve schools, colleges, and organizations. We will continue to educate our members through site visits and professional and leadership training. And we'll continue to build resiliency by collaborating with our commissioners, our management, and our other resource groups. And together, we will build an LADWP ship that inspires and empowers our members to lead the way in service.
So, as you can see, we are a very busy chapter, but none of these events or none of these activities would be possible without the support from executive management, the Office of DEI, Board of Commissioners, and of course, our LADWP ship familia. We want to invite all LADWP employees to join our chapter, and they could do so by reaching out to us at ship@ladwp.com. And they can also keep up to date with our activities by following us on our LinkedIn and Instagram pages. With that, I'd like to thank everyone for their time, and welcome any questions. Thank you.
I want to thank you for your presentation, and also congratulate you on the growth. I'm familiar with ship. Back when I chaired Transportation Committee in the legislature, ship was heavily involved in the transportation industry. And it's great to see the branching out and the recruiting from water and power as well. So, hopefully, this will be a fruitful recruiting area for you guys, both the chapter and also the organization. Yeah, Mia?
Since I attended one of the days, I was so impressed by, you know, just the level of participation, but also the, you know, both the generation of professionals and elected officials who like put their heart out, including Alex Padilla, and others who have been, you know, who are familiar with the organization. It's a national organization, and you, I only wish that, that some of the professions that some of us represent could also be representing at ship. I kept on saying, "Do you know what Esri is?" And nobody, no, most people know. Well, you know, he lives in, you know, I think people should start perhaps sort of being interested in landscape architecture as a profession. And we have a tremendous leader in Jack Dangerman from Esri in Redlands, and it's something we, but it was just done out of a little, little sort of mini jealousy and just thinking, wow, this is so fantastic what you guys are doing within this organization, but in general, how the schools were being represented from across the country and the universities with programs, engineering programs. It's fantastic. It's really fantastic.
Yeah, thank you. Ship has definitely done a lot, I think, to uplift the community. We try to be as inclusive as possible, you know. Over a quarter of our membership are in non-engineering classifications, so we really welcome everyone here at the department.
Thank you so much. I'll just add to Commissioner Lear's comments, and thank you for this presentation today. And especially, you may have heard earlier in the board meeting. And especially, you may have heard earlier in the board meeting, we were talking about, you know, how much work we have ahead of us to recruit the workforce of the future, and so really want to especially emphasize the amazing work you guys are doing, reaching out to students and connecting with schools, and really helping people see the potential of these careers at LADWP. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
We have, who's presenting on the wildfire mitigation plan? We have Alex Garanilla, Regulatory Electrical Engineer, and Lucian Pattonowd is the Assistant Director of Power Transmission and Distribution, and looks nothing like me.
And what a day to have this presentation.
Yeah, couldn't have picked a better day, right?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, President Katz, Executive Management. Again, my name is Alex Garanilla, joined by Lucian, and we will be presenting on an overview of the annual incremental updates of our wildfire mitigation plan for the year 2024. Now, first, we'll begin with some wildfire statistics. The graphic here does show wildfire trends over the last seven years. The orange bar represents the number of acres burned, and the blue area is the number of fires per that respective year. So unfortunately, we are not on a downward trend. There is still an ongoing risk of wildfires, driven primarily by climate change. Now, these statistics were updated in November, so they do include the more recent ones that occurred in SoCal, San Bernardino, Ventura County Riverside fires as well. Now, since 2018, LADWP has worked collaboratively with the California Municipal Utilities Association, CMUA, and the Southern California Public Power Association, SCAPA, to share ideas on how LADWP approaches wildfire mitigation. We frequently participate in CMUA and SCAPA wildfire and regulatory working groups to collectively address recommendations from the Wildfire Safety Advisory Board, among other issues. So, for example, in 2022, we did participate in CMUA workshops on how each utility is approaching unanticipated risks. More recently, we have participated in a series of working groups that are organized by the CMUA to bring together utility and industry representatives, and we've discussed several topics. These include metrics, vegetation management, asset management, grid design, and system hardening, risk modeling, and even climate change. And across these meeting series are excellent information sharing, best practice discussions to ensure that all POUs, publicly owned utilities, are leveraging opportunities to enhance their mitigation efforts. Now, our core wildfire mitigation plan team and several groups across the department participate in these discussions to ensure that our efforts are well-informed, and as a result, we do make numerous enhancements to our plan, especially with respect to the metrics that we track moving forward. And Lucian will have more details on this in future slides. Now, I'm going to reiterate some commendations that were made to LADWP. These were made in response to our June 2022 wildfire mitigation plan, and the reason why we're going back two years is that was the last time that the Wildfire Safety Advisory Board made commendations and provided feedbacks specific to each utility. After that year, they have been more generalized recommendations, so in case you were not on the board or not on the management team at 2022, we're going to rehash some commendations that were made. So those included, the advisory board appreciated LADWP's inclusion of a context-setting template and statutory cross-reference tables. These updates clarified LADWP's characteristics for the advisory board and made it clear how we are meeting state law, specifically the measures of Senate Bill 901. The board was impressed by language added regarding LADWP's workforce training protocols, including our qualified electrical worker training. The advisory board commended LADWP for significant improvements in the description of our community outreach and public awareness and collaboration efforts. And then there were a few other commendations made, overall thanking LADWP for continuing to make numerous updates to its plan and improvements, such as adding the plan to our Eastern Sierra website. So those were back in '22. And moving forward, we do have a short summary of the 2024 Wildfire Safety Advisory Board recommendations. Again, these were generalized comments to all POUs, they were no longer specific to LADWP. So to summarize, the recommendation encouraged POUs to participate in meetings and workshops as requested by the Wildfire Safety Advisory Board, to engage with other POUs, joint associations, and the Wildfire Safety Advisory Board to exchange information and ideas through discussions. So it was a pretty easy task. We addressed this recommendation right away, and we have participated in these working group meetings from January through April 2024. That really satisfied the recommendation for this year, although we do continue to do so to this day. And I don't have a slide for it because this is a recent update, but one week ago, on December 4th, the advisory board did adopt the 2025 Guidance Advisory Opinion. And once again, they are generalized recommendations, and I'll go over them more in the last slide. So for now, I'll turn it over to Lucian, and he'll share more specific details on the 2024 plan updates.
I'm just reading off the slides. What's the next one?
Up to you.
So we're on five, six? Six?
Yes.
All right, so several of LADWP's notable updates for 2024 can be classified with four broad areas, which will be, which we'll expand on the next slides. Power System Reliability Program, Workforce Training, Inspection and Maintenance, and Wildfire Mitigation Plan Metrics. The next slide. The slide summarized the assets, replacement accomplishments for the Power System Reliability Program, or PSRP, for the fiscal year of 2022 to 2023. Thirty-four thousand, roughly 3,500 poles were replaced, 11,031 crossarms, 1,584 transformers, and then 16 miles of conductor. Table also lists PSRP replacements for the previous two fiscal years, as you can see up there, that the performance is being maintained at similar levels, in similar levels in most categories. Next one, Workforce Training. In 2024, incremental update also saw updates in the Plan section on Workforce Training, including addition of internal wildfire information website, the wildfire handout for LADWP employees to use when working in LAFD fire zones and Tier 2 and Tier 3 high fire threat districts. The website contains the latest version of LADWP's wildfire mitigation plan and links to other resources, training materials, and reminders for what tools and equipment that are required under all conditions, including red flag conditions. As of May 2023, LADWP's board adopted motion number 23222 for distribution, line pole inspection, and maintenance. Motion 23222 requested for increased transparency and independent oversight concerning compliance with the CPUC, GEO 95, and 165, and specifically called for quarterly and annual reporting on various aspects of distribution, line pole inspection, maintenance, and compliance. Since the adoption of motion 23222, LADWP has provided quarterly year-to-date reports on distribution, assets inspection statistics, and completed and outstanding fix-it tickets to its board. As a result, these reports allow LADWP and its board to ensure the accuracy and completeness of fix-it tickets. Trouble memo accelerated codes, TMAX, and inspection and maintenance accelerated codes, IMAX, reducing the risk of operating damaged equipment and wildfire ignitions. The next one's mine, too. On LADWP's 2023 comprehensive update, it is, it's wildfire mitigation plan, LADWP greatly expanded upon the metrics that LADWP uses to evaluate the plan's performance. In the 2024 incremental update, LADWP provided annual updates to its metrics to further enhance an informants plan and wildfire mitigation efforts. The metric can be classified into four categories: internal risk metrics, outcome metrics, reliability metrics, performance metrics. I'm not going to pass it on to the next one.
All right, so to summarize the status of the wildfire mitigation plan, we did submit the plan to the Wildfire Safety Advisory Board on June 27, 2024, so that was by the July 1st deadline of this year. And to satisfy the California state law, we are presenting the updates in a public hearing. Additionally, state law requires a comprehensive update and an independent evaluation at least every three years, and the in-between years are the incremental updates. So 2023 was that last comprehensive update. This year and next year are those incremental updates alone. Now, all feedback gathered this year is included in our internal priority list, which guides the revisions for the plan, our associated policies, programs, standards, and procedures. The department-wide wildfire mitigation plan committee will reconvene in about January, February, to discuss the necessary plan revisions for 2025. The wildfire core working group does meet bi-weekly to track and address these updates to the plan. So as I mentioned previously, we did have an update one week ago. The advisory board's 2025 guidance opinion was published, and so they, again, were recommended to POUs as a whole, and some of the topics that they'd like us to look at are quality assurance and quality control programs, performance metrics to measure the performance of our mitigation efforts, our progress and achievements, situational awareness more deeply, and how we are using technology to improve information and data gathering so that we are better informed of wildfire conditions, expanding upon customer awareness and communication, and then clarifying just a few sections of the plan based on feedback received since the last publication from the board, the advisory board, independent evaluators, and all LADWP stakeholders. So all of these efforts will be done by the next July, and then you will be seeing us again for the 2025 updates. That is all we have today. If there are any questions, we'll take them.
Questions, anyone?
What kind of community, when you said you were, when you did community outreach?
In what forum?
A great question. So one of the specific examples they provided was accessibility to the wildfire mitigation plan. So although it is on our public website, they made recommendations such as making available in multiple languages, maybe in other sites that LADWP has, such as our Eastern Sierra website. So because they're more general, they may not know that we already do some of these aspects, but we'll continue to work with our communications department to see what we can improve on.
Well, and I'm thinking above him, John, some, you know, basically, communities who can't access, you know, or don't, aren't comfortable accessing a computer or getting information that way.
Yes, very true.
And some of the communities that have been, you know, affected tremendously, they might be in a mountainous area, and, you know, some of them might rely on, you know, in-person sort of presentations, or is that not the case?
No, that's very true, and if, you know, making improvements on making this, you know, material more accessible, maybe mailed out, those updates, that's definitely one of the improvements we can make as well.
I don't have a question, I just want to thank you for this important work. You know, as President Katz acknowledged this morning, the Franklin Fire is currently burning in Malibu at 0% containment, and is a good reminder, as communities are threatened there, that, you know, with climate change and with the increasing intensity and size of these fires, this type of preparation work and mitigation work is so critical. So thank you very much for keeping us updated and for the work that you do on the planning side.
I would wonder, I'm sorry, again, just getting to that point, I live near Griffith Park, and we don't often, you know, some, so we end up with some of these issues that we have to contend with. But, yeah, finding ways of, whether it's going to churches or other places, so people understand what it is they need to be doing, whether it's trimming their trees or, you know, not plant, you know, or caring for their properties in a certain way, they need to, it needs to be clearer, I think. But I'm sure Joe has a lot of opinions about that, how to do that, so.
We've worked closely with the group and will continue to do that and look to improve that outreach as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's some good collaborations we could have. There's a website, Sustainable or Defensible Space, that was put together with CAL FIRE and RCD and some other agencies to help residents know how to do that kind of, you know, home preparation. There's lots of good agencies within the city working on these issues, so I think there are some potential collaborations there that we could discuss.
I agree. Thank you.
There's a comment, I know, on part of the news coverage of Malibu this morning. One of the people they were interviewing was talking about what's changed as a result of climate change, where we get these winter storms that'll sort of pass in or out, and then you get a lot of slow, you get a lot of quick growth as a result of it, but then we dry out much faster now because of the winds that follow that, the dry winds that come up from the desert, et cetera. So we have to make adjustments in how we do clearances and safe areas and space in between dwellings, et cetera.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I just, I think, one is what the department does or agencies can do, and they are, you know, have the right resources and they understand what to do. But there are people who are living in those areas, who, you know, bought properties, you know, decades ago, and sometimes are not prepared. They just don't know how to manage themselves.
Okay, anything else, guys? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative and timely.
Yes.
A growth industry, unfortunately, but we're glad you're doing what you're doing. Got a motion and second on the minutes from the last meeting we had, without objection?
Move to approve the minutes.
Approve that?
Move to approve the minutes in the last meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Adjust items J, K, M, and N.
No questions on filed items for me at this time.
What's from commissioners, filed items?
Um.
Any questions on filed items or reports by commissioners? Moving right along. JK, and what were the other two?
M and N.
M, and motions for future considerations?
None.
No?
None at this time.
Neighborhood councils?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed.
All right. In that case...
If we have a second on committee activity, will you indulge me?
No, of course.
Very simply, I was up in, I was up on the aqueduct in Yount County in Bishop last week for our tribal engagement committee meeting, and it's just worth noting the sort of tenor of that meeting being just night and day from what it was when I started this two years ago, thanks in large part to the work of our new...
In a good way.
In a good way. Our new tribal liaison, Audra Wise, and our work as the board to have the tribes here, and supporting, you know, more aggressively supporting some of their requests around access to land, sale of land, supporting them on, I mean, I think they had some requests on the, from the power system around electrification planning that our tribal liaison guided through a process, she got them, power got them back through her to the tribes within two and four weeks respectively, which I guess is months faster than it has been before, so, you know, some of our staunchest critics in that meeting, which is always kind of like being tied outside to a barn in a storm, were singing the praises of the department in a way that I've never heard before, and so it was really exciting to see that shift, and a real testament to the work that, you know, Adam Perez and John Hayes have been doing on the water system up there to warm up those relationships, and the work that, you know, Audra has picked up and been doing on our behalf, so that was really encouraging.
Great. So whatever they're putting in the water up there, keep doing it, you know, it's working. No, thank you, that's good to hear. It's great to get the feedback, so. Anybody got anything else? In that case, it's your turn to shine, Ben.
The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or extension of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
Thanks. Close session, or recessed close session, technically, I guess.
Or recessed closed session, technically, I guess.